Seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. And if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers, Alambas.
Yes.
Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Here. And if we could at this time have a motion to approve the agenda as it's been presented this evening?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Alambas.
Yes.
Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward. If you please state your name and then also write your address for the clerk, it would be very much appreciated, and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Hello. I'm Tom Schmidt. I'm here on behalf of the Elks Lodge and just want to say that we do not support the tax increase that you are proposing at this time. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Dan Williams, represent Parkview Lanes, Bowling Alley. We do not like the tax increase on this. So, yeah. What else I have to say? Bunch of stuff. Yeah, you guys have your festivals in the park all the time. You guys shut down Harris Street when you could easily, just as easy, shut down Cass Street. My customers don't have parking. They've been harassed the whole seventy-seven years we've been in business in this town. Yeah, I just, I don't feel that we should have to pay for that. I don't feel that that should have to come down onto the, to the property owners. So, I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Bill Ewald. I'm a citizen and representing the Elks. Just a general question with regard to the parking. You already heard from our exalted ruler. This, this question goes to the ice skating rink that's part of the parking area. So, in the five years, or how long it's been, I've observed, I think, a total of eight people use the skating area. And I'm sure that if you had the money, you could lift that up, you do it every year, and probably put in another ten, maybe twelve parking slots. That would sometimes relieve a lot of pressure, believe it or not. Sometimes the Elks have to go all the way to Harris Street to park, and it's an inconvenience. So, something to consider. Also, who's paying for the gas on the little gas sit around? That's an interesting thing. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from our regular meeting that was held on October third, along with the closed session minutes.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers. Alambas.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries. So, that then takes us to the public hearing that we have this evening. Marcus, would you like to introduce?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. And Councilmember King, I'm just going to borrow your mic for a moment here.
I'm loud, people can hear me.
Yes. Appreciate you handing the floor off to staff while we get the hearing going. I'm going to take just a couple of minutes introducing the item, and then I'm going to punt it to the Chair of our Downtown Development Authority slash Business Improvement District, Steve Barnes, as well as introduce another board member, Rob Munger, who's also here this evening, both of which coincidentally happen to also be downtown business owners as well within the district itself that the special assessment levy renewal is being proposed for. And my comments honestly are going to be, are going to be brief. I know that it's hard to believe, but, but they will be. Sort of, long story short, the special assessment has been in place now since approximately the mid, mid to late nineteen nineties and has been used to essentially cover the costs or, in this current case, subsidize the costs of operations and maintenance of the public parking lot facilities. The downtown business owners, most of which don't have public parking facilities adequate for their needs based upon what their type of business is, use these public parking spaces as a way to accommodate patrons of our downtown and certainly patrons of the downtown businesses. The city, frankly, for better or for worse, developed a mechanism under state law through the special assessment process to create a revenue source specific to being able to maintain those public amenities that otherwise wouldn't be there if not for the fact that it's our downtown core area. I have heard from a few folks over the last couple of weeks about concerns and frankly desire to not have the assessment in place, and they all have very good logical reasons as to why not. At the same time, as I've explained it, and I figured I would explain it publicly, the assessment is, is in a sense more of a partnership that we have with the downtown. The general fund does subsidize to the tune of approximately thirty to forty percent the overall operations and maintenance costs of that facility. If the city were to look at a different methodology, that would take perhaps a little bit of time to do. Different methodology, meaning if we were to not look at a special assessment, we would have to look at ways of siphoning, in a sense, dollars that otherwise would be used for other roads and infrastructure to have it redirected towards this, or perhaps looking at bonding as another opportunity to come up with sustainable funds. And that's what this is all about, which is to develop a sustainable funding source. The assessment program that you'll hear about is a five-year term. We've been going through this process, at least this is, I think, the, the third time since I've been here that we will be going through this process. You're going to hear from our board members a little bit about the process and what the rationale and thought were, was from the DDA and BID Board, and then John will follow up with a very brief slideshow that gets into a little, a little bit more detail. Certainly, he and/or our finance director can also provide additional clarifications where, where necessary after the public hearing component with council debate and discussion. So, with that, Mr. Barnes, Mr. Munger, if you guys would like to come on up, that'd be awesome.
Well, I can go first. I'm Rob Munger. I'm on the DDA Board now, and it's a privilege to be on it. There was a lot of discussion at the DDA about the parking assessment. It came from staff that, you know, with inflation and added cost, we need to address this, and I think I'm the third, I get the third highest raise of all the properties, and it's a pretty lengthy spreadsheet, so I have a vested interest, so not just as a DDA member, but as a property owner. I looked at my other buildings, and at this point, I would be willing to give the city an easement to all my properties because this is a lot cheaper than what I'm paying for my other buildings. And the other thing is, is I look at the City of Cadillac, the parking's up to snuff, the maintenance, I mean, it's, you go into other parking lots and you have to worry about potholes. And so, it's, I understand the staff's position that they're hesitant to, to bring this to the public, to the property owners, to this board, because nobody wants higher taxes, they don't want higher fees. I think I'm going to be paying eight hundred and some odd dollars more per year compared to Grand Rapids. Two, two individuals that are close to my heart, my oldest son worked downtown Grand Rapids, he was paying a little over three hundred dollars per month for parking. My daughter was paying fifteen hundred dollars for an apartment and was paying that about, at that same amount, I think it was two eighty, and she had to walk a block. So, I think it's a privilege as a property owner that we have this parking structure this way. I understand it's not perfect for everybody, but I would not want to go to a gated system where I have to go in and pay each time or my tenants had to pay or, or metered. So, and I do feel like the, the staff and, you know, our board president has taken a lot of time to, to discuss and think this thing through, so I do want to appreciate what the staff's done. It wasn't easy. If you look at that spreadsheet, it's very detailed. So, that's my two cents.
I'm Stephen Barnes. I am now the Chair of the DDA, very recent. Marcus asked me to come today just to kind of share some of the process that we went through looking at this, and it was not a short process. We have a parking lot subcommittee that meets to start the ball rolling, and then it goes to the full DDA. A lot of time was spent looking at various different models, different ideas at how to be completely fair in a utopian world where everybody's paying exactly what they get. We looked at a couple of models that didn't work at all. In fact, at the second to last one, we thought we had it figured out, and when Owen came back with the numbers and we looked at it, it was a hot mess, to be quite honest. So, we kind of, we kind of threw that one back and, and went back closer to the original model and still tried to, you know, keep all those different components in there and make sure that it was well balanced. Parking is not glamorous. It's not something that people get excited about or want to pay for, but it is of absolute necessity. Every business, every property owner within the DDA has to have parking, myself included. I own now two buildings downtown, and I kind of have the gamut. I have retail, I have apartments, I have a vacant building that's, you know, pending reconstruction that is sitting completely empty that I will be paying this assessment on. So, you know, for me on the DDA, I tried to look at both sides. I tried to look at, from a, you know, board perspective, what's good for the whole, you know, what do we need to do as a community to keep this asset maintained? And then, as a property owner, you know, what is fair to, not just myself as a property owner, but everybody else? And we went business by business. I mean, we looked at everybody to say, okay, you know what, is, is there anything we're missing? Is there anything that, you know, could be unfair? And this was the model that ultimately came back, that we were comfortable saying, you know, this is about as fair as we can possibly get. At the end of the day, both my personal feeling, and I think the, almost unanimously on the board, is that even though parking isn't fun or glamorous, it is a cost of doing business. And if you want to own a building in a downtown like this, this is your parking method. If any of us moved our businesses anywhere else, either on a private property with a private lot, we would be paying to maintain it. If we moved it to a strip mall on the north side of town, we would be paying CAM charges to, for them to maintain it. And essentially, that's almost what this is. It's, it's a collective, and kind of like Rob hit on it, it's, it's a collective way for everyone to get their parking spaces maintained in the most efficient, cost-effective manner possible. And I think that when you break it down and you look at it, for me, I can't think of a situation as a property owner where I could maintain even the min, most minimal amount of parking spots I would need cheaper than what this assessment calls for. And so, that's one of the reasons why I was very comfortable voting in favor of it, because I do think as a property owner, it's a good deal. Is it, there is an increase, and I know ten percent sounds like a huge increase, but considering inflation and the cost of simple things like paint to stripe lots, you know, the materials to reseal them, things to, you know, asphalt to, to fill potholes or, you know, whatever you need to do, ten percent over five years, I wish that all my costs only went up ten percent over the last five years. Most of my costs have went up ten percent in the last six months. So, it was a reality, you know, to put, reality is, we should have proposed a bigger increase, but we understand what everybody's going through as well. And so, I guess that piggybacks into, as a board, you know, when we're trying to maintain these lots, which is, you know, one of our duties, we're very conservative in trying to make sure that we are getting the most bang for our buck. And, you know, Ken Payne with the city, you know, kind of takes charge of a lot of that. He's done an excellent job in identifying what needs the most attention, and, and we probably, three, four years ago now, we kind of got on a plan to try to be a little more proactive and routine in maintaining these lots. A lot of them were neglected for a lot of years, and it kind of was, you know, routine maintenance was pushed off to the side, but that ends up costing more in the long run. So, really, I mean, I guess I've said what I need to say. I think it all comes down to necessity, and like I said, it's, as a business owner, it's a cost of doing business, and I just view it that way. I know a lot of other people have expressed that, you know, they'd like the city to, you know, invest, and we pay taxes, and I agree with all of that, and I'm not dismissing any of that frustration. I think that there are a lot of opportunities and needs downtown. You know, we have crumbling sidewalks that people trip on daily. You know, we have some other infrastructure issues that need to be addressed, and I would love to see the city get more involved. But on this particular topic, as far as parking lot maintenance, I'm comfortable saying that this is where, as a property owner, it kind of is, it is what it is. You know, it's a routine expense that, that we need to pay for. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. I would like to just now kind of use a PowerPoint presentation to just kind of go over some of the basics of how the formulas come together. As was mentioned earlier, this formula for the assessment and the assessment role comes from the DDA bid board, and it has gone through their parking subcommittee as well as recommendation from the full, full board. And I think you'll find too, as I go through it, that it hasn't changed a lot in terms of how we've done it for the last two or three periods for the assessment. And if anything, we've just tried to get better at being more accurate with the square footages and the uses and so forth. This slide shows in the tan color the actual parking assessment district. You'll also see the darker brown boxes. They highlight the actual public lots within the assessment district. There are thirteen total parking lots. There are ten on the west side of Mitchell. There are three on the east side. The reason, the reason they're mostly on the west side is just the topography is better and more suitable, and there was more opportunity to acquire property. With the steep slopes on the east side, much more difficult, and plus the level of development on the east side didn't provide too much opportunity to increase lots on, on that side. There are a total of eighty-two properties within the parking assessment district. This slide will show you pretty much the assessment role budget. The total fund annual budget to maintain those thirteen lots is ninety-two thousand four hundred dollars. The portion that is reimbursed by the businesses is fifty-nine thousand four hundred or represents sixty-four percent of the total annual cost. The city-funded portion is thirty-three thousand, which represents thirty-six percent. The city also then pays a portion for the City Hall facility and for the Eagle Office Building, which is owned by the city. And when you add those together, it's more, it comes up somewhere in the neighborhood of forty percent of the total annual fee. The total budget for the five-year period is four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, of which the business portion is two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, and the city portion is one hundred and sixty-five thousand. The assessment formula of how we arrived at it is basically based on three factors. The parking demand generation, and that's basically what we project each business to generate or create in terms of parking need. Some businesses have much more, they create much more need for parking than others. Some, there's just very low turnout for a business. Others, there's much higher turnout. So, the parking demand portion of the formula accounts for fifty percent, because that is one of the more critical pieces. We also looked at building size, which accounts for thirty percent of the assessment. And finally, contiguity, which is twenty percent. And basically, in the contiguity number, essentially, there's two numbers. You're charged one, one number if you are contiguous to these public parking lots and a lower number if you are not contiguous to these public parking lots. The formulas for the parking demand, I primarily relied on the ITE Traffic Generation Manual. That's the Institute of Traffic Engineers. They're one of the only organizations that continue to yearly or every couple of years generate new additions of their manual to update and increase the amount of parking studies that they do to, to set, try to give out factual information on how much parking is being used by businesses in various categories throughout the country. The formula that we used, we reduced everything to a range of one to six parking spaces per one thousand square feet. We've actually tempered the generation numbers that came from ITE, lowered them slightly to be what I believe more in keeping with what we've actually observed in Cadillac over the last several years. We base it on the gross floor area because it's just easier to look at the actual factual numbers on building size and then correlate those numbers accordingly. Of course, credit is being given to all the businesses that have private parking on their lots, so we generate what their parking need is, we subtract what they're providing, and then we're only charging for what they can't provide on their private lot of their own spaces. In the year one of the, the new assessment, we would need to generate fifty-nine thousand four hundred dollars for the business portion. Based on the square footage element, which is thirty percent of the overall fee, we would have to raise seventeen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. The parking deficiency portion would be at twenty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars and accounts for fifty percent. And the contiguity or proximity assessment would be twenty percent, which would be at eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. We also just wanted to take a look how what we were doing might compare to the private sector. Rob Munger, who spoke earlier this evening, was gracious enough to share his costs for the Cobb's Mitchell Building, which is also located in downtown. The private parking lot for Cobb's Mitchell is thirty-five parking spaces. His annual plowing and salting fees are five thousand and forty-six dollars. His other maintenance, which would include striping, sealing, top coating, and also inflationary costs, he plans out at two thousand two hundred dollars. His cost per parking space for the thirty, thirty-five car lot is two hundred and seven dollars per parking space. The cost, based on our numbers, the cost per parking space for our program is at one hundred and thirty-four dollars. So, there is a sizable difference between the one thirty-four and the two oh seven, which looks like a favorable comparison to look at the private costs versus what we're doing publicly. And the other thing too is, in these thirteen parking lots, we have six, about six hundred and eighty-seven spaces. So, that was the number that was used to derive the cost per parking space, and that was divided into the ninety-two thousand four hundred. So, that's basically a short brief on how it all came together, and as the board members mentioned, we did go through many different processes. The most recent one before this one was to go totally on square footage, and we saw a large swing in increases for probably about fifteen businesses. And so, when we looked at that, we didn't think that was a good idea. So, we just, our efforts in the last two periods have been to just try to use improved numbers. Our square footage numbers is coming right from county records, the assessment, people that go out and measure the buildings, record drawings, and our numbers are taken directly from that. And we also site visited and counted all the private parking to make sure that people were given full credit. So, we've just been trying to stay in the same system, but try to do it better each time. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you. Don't go too far. No, you can sit down.
Is that all you have?
Yes.
I mean, that was a lot. Didn't mean to say it like that.
Sorry. I can go again if you want.
No, no, no. That's okay. All right. At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of our public hearing, and when you speak during this public hearing, you actually have six minutes if you have that much information that you'd like to share. So, it is twice the amount of time that you would have in normal public comment.
We good? Dan Williams, Sparkville Lanes. So, I would like to know of all the businesses that aren't filled uptown, when somebody moves into that, are you going to deduct that off of everybody else's bill when they have to pay their portion of it? A new business rolls into town, building's being occupied, do they? How does that, how does that work out? I guess is what I'm asking.
If it's okay with the mayor. Mayor, we would probably just to try to do our best to address comments once council takes back the floor after the public.
So, after public comment, we'll write down all of the questions, and after
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Don't go too far. No, you can sit down.
Is that all you have?
Yes.
I mean, that was a lot. Didn't mean to say it like that.
Sorry. I can go again if you want.
No, no, no. That's okay. All right. At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of our public hearing, and when you speak during this public hearing, you actually have six minutes if you have that much information that you'd like to share. So it is twice the amount of time that you would have in normal public comment.
Are we good? Dan Williams, Spark Valance. So I would like to know of all the businesses that aren't filled uptown, when somebody moves into that, are you going to deduct that off of everybody else's bill when they have to pay their portion of it? A new business rolls into town, building's being occupied, do they? How does that, how does that work out? I guess is what I'm asking.
If it's okay with the mayor. Mayor, we would probably just to try to do our best to address comments once council takes back the floor after the public.
So after public comment, we'll write down all of the questions, and after public comment closes, we'll make it part of the discussion to answer your question. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to further discussion amongst the council.
Would you like staff to try to address that question first?
I would, please.
John or Owen, would you be able to address that question?
So the question is, when, if a new business that doesn't exist today develops in town, typically, there's no change during the five-year period, and then that adjustment would be made at the end of the period? So if, you know, if, if it's vacant, it's like Steve's building is already getting assessed at what its normal use would be, so similar to, you know, property tax, would still, would still have already paid that first year, but then the subsequent years would be paid by the new property owner at the same, at the same rate. And then there's, if there's a utilization change over that five-year period, then John would pick that up for the parking demand number on the next formula, in the next calculation.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Council, any comments?
I guess I can start. Since our last meeting, when the public hearing was set, I invited people, if you remember, to come and give me comment and input, which they did, and then I actually walked downtown and talked to over twenty of the businesses. I was concerned that prior to the public hearing being set, none of the businesses had been communicated with, and I know we have a DDA that's looking at it, but the level of shock of owners struck me, that if it's a partnership, they hadn't been included in on the conversation on what was going to happen. I'll digress for a moment and say I have a personal opinion in the sense that a special assessment is meant to be for a project that benefits all, and as they talked about, a partnership to achieve a goal and then end and then move on. And this has been going on since nineteen ninety-five approximately, and that bothers me for businesses. I was really concerned in the feedback, we all know the theater, Horizon Books, the new R.J. Grants, and there were several others that said the renewal of this assessment would cause them to reconsider whether it's worth being downtown or not. And that concerns me greatly because if this assessment has a chilling effect, not only on current businesses that would look at other options that aren't downtown, that even though there may be maintenance costs are not as high as to what it costs to operate a business in Cadillac, that really concerns me. The second part of the concern is that once you start getting those vacancies, how do you draw businesses in? Marcus is good at talking with a bunch of the people, and there were two business owners that talked to, I believe Marcus, I know they talked to me, who have just renovated buildings downtown and spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. And their point is, now you're going to renew this assessment. I, our taxes are so high in the city, we've made the commitment to be here for our buildings and to bring businesses, and we can't pass on this assessment to our tenants. Our square footage, what we can charge for square footage rent-wise can't sustain with the new assessment. I think that it is time that we need to go back, and the other question that I was hit with from numerous business owners were, it's time for the city to budget this expense into the general budget as part, as we do with streets, as we do with other infrastructure, as everybody benefits from parking. It's not just the businesses who are benefiting, the general public does. So I'm, I do think we have to go back. It is a, parking is critical, but I don't think we can put it on the backs of our local businesses from nineteen ninety-five through two thousand twenty-two in the same manner that we've done and just say, we're just doing business as usual. I think it's time for a change. I think that we absolutely have to go to the drawing board because the infrastructure's critical, but that's okay. Work is what we have to do to service all our citizens, and if that means we have to go a year or two where we're budgeting it in is a normal part of the process while we talk to businesses, I think it's critical that the DDA go out. You know, again, I talked to over twenty businesses, and none of them have been approached until they got the letter following our last meeting. They had no idea that this was even going on, and that really, really concerns me because I think if we're going to say it's a partnership, then we have to have those conversations, and we have to look at how it's done. And several of the people, again, and I know Marcus, three or four of them have talked, if the city came to us and said, hey, we're going to do a parking structure, we have this project that's going to benefit all the businesses, the businesses would be there and say, we may be okay with this special assessment and get behind it, but you can't say there's something special about the parking lot infrastructure at this point since we've been doing it since nineteen ninety-five, and it should be part of our general budget, and I think we have to be fiscally responsible in doing that. And I specifically am very concerned in the chilling effect of this tax on the downtown, and our downtown is so positive right now. We have the space down at the park, we have the farmer's market, we have so many positive things, and if we do something that then stops this synergy, that stops people from thinking about coming downtown and starting their businesses and being down here, we've shot ourselves in the foot. So I, I think at this point, we need to say, we aren't going to do business as usual. We're going to stop, take a pause, go back to the drawing board, budget what we need to budget in for right now, and get to work on figuring out whether it's a conversation with business that they do get behind. I did go back and look, and in nineteen ninety-five, we still had dirt parking lots. So a lot of the businesses were on board with the special assessment because it was going to benefit everybody to get it up to speed. I, that's not what we, I don't think we have a special assessment now. I think we have a tax, and it's an additional tax, and I think it's a tax that businesses can't afford right now.
Yep. So personally, as a business owner, I have two offices, one in Herring Township, where we pay for and maintain our own parking lot, and one in a downtown, just like Cadillac, so over in Ludington. So I understand the costs associated with a parking lot that you own versus the costs that come with doing a business downtown. I definitely support the work that our Downtown Development Authority does, that the Business Improvement District does. I appreciate John Wallace, you know, continually proving upon this process, you know, that was great, you know, parking deficiencies, like I definitely understand that. I certainly understand that having the businesses that don't maintain their own parking lots share in the cost, like that does make sense. However, I think like Steve said, you know, the past few years, we've done a lot of work revitalizing our downtown after years of decline. I think if you look at the current economic forces of inflation, businesses recovering from the shutdown, a possible recession, you know, I'd hate to see that go backwards as well. I also think it's not often, as a city council, that we have a chance to reduce the burden on our local business owners. We don't work in Lansing, we don't work in Washington, there's not, there's only so much we can do. And I guess I would also like to take this opportunity to reduce the financial burden for business owners that choose to have their businesses downtown. You know, I don't support a reduction in quality. Like you said, Rob, we have, I think we have great parking lots, we have great parking services. I know it was tough with some of them under construction this summer, but that, you know, the White Pine Trailhead, that's going to help things. You know, we've done a lot of good things. I would definitely, you know, support reducing the assessment down further, you know, thirty percent, five percent for the next five years, you know, if that tool, you know, like Steve said, maybe, maybe the time for a special assessment is over, maybe not. Maybe it's time to rework, you know, what we do. I would consider eliminating it completely. You know, I think, like you said, in the future, if we're, when we're looking at parking solutions, we're going to build a parking garage. I know we've talked about that, we've looked at that. You know, that's definitely something where we're going to need an assessment to pay for that. You know, that might have to happen, and I would support that as well. But again, I'd like to take this rare opportunity to reduce the financial burden for business owners that choose to locate downtown, however that looks.
I can't believe I agree with you. You said something I agreed with. Nobody likes to raise taxes today. Now is not the time to raise taxes. Our downtown is thriving, it's doing well, getting on their feet after COVID, trying to find people to work. This isn't, this isn't the way. It's ten percent, no. So I agree with both of you then.
Well, before I came in here this evening, I was, you know, I knew that we had been doing this for twenty-seven years, and I know that it had been renewed three times in that period of time. Is that correct?
No, I didn't mention, I think in my time here.
Three times.
This might be the third.
Okay. So every five years in the past, what did the five-year proposal look like? This year, it's a ten percent increase. What did it look like in years past? Does anybody know the answer to that question?
Interesting.
Yeah, so it was actually a little bit higher last time because what they did is they took the total maintenance budget and took it times seventy-five percent, and it was, so the, you know, the logic on it was that the assessment, the maintenance should be covered seventy-five percent per year by the assessment. So it went from about forty-eight thousand up to fifty-four thousand, so it's a little bit higher than ten percent. Prior to that, it was, it was another, looks like increase of about the same. So it seems like in that, in that range every five years.
Okay, thank you. You know, a lot has already been said, and prior to this meeting tonight, I think about our businesses downtown, they're what makes the city viable. That's what brings people here. There is a lot asked of our businesses in the downtown district. Every time somebody's doing a fundraiser, every time there's an event, those are the people who are called upon to make those events successful. So when I think about a ten percent increase, that didn't really set well with me, only thinking about what we've tried to do with all the work that we've done downtown, what have we been trying to do? And I don't know if the answer is today, say, you know, we just need to get rid of this and take it out of the general fund. I don't, I don't know that that's the answer, but I think it's worth having a conversation of maybe saying, you know, today it looks like the city covers thirty-six percent, and then with the property that the city owns, we have forty percent of the total cost. So, you know, maybe we look at it and we say that this year, rather than getting a, you know, a ten percent increase to the businesses, why don't we look at the opportunity to get to a point where we don't have this assessment? Over the next five years, can we work from a budget standpoint to get rid of this assessment? You know, I, I mean, I think there is a lot of conversation to be had about what does that look like? You know, when we think about our general budget, you know, we talk about how healthy it is. So, you know, what can we, what can we use some of those funds for to make the biggest impact in the community?
I like that, you know, the mayor ended with some questions there because I think, you know, a small finance, financial presentation about the things that we're talking about, whether it's phasing it out, reducing it, eliminating it, that it would be nice to have, you know, another, another point of discussion with some, you know, with some financial points.
I was going to say, we can prepare some options that could include what it may look like with different cost-sharing ratios, what it would look like if we were to simply phase it out over a period of time, what it may look like if we were to just amend the budget, which would mean that it would potentially go away if we were to look at having the general fund cover it. I think we just must keep in mind that while the general fund is healthy today, and I would love to make a guarantee to city council that it will be a year from now or five years from now, you know, we just don't have that crystal ball. And so moving away entirely from a dedicated source of bringing revenues in could be, could be a difficult conversation to have, but certainly it's one of, one for council to have as a policy level conversation, if that's what you'd like to do. Cadillac is fortunate to have, you know, both a DDA and a Business Improvement District that allows us to utilize these tools separate from the general tax funds that we have, but that doesn't mean that we have to until the end of time as well. And so if, that seems to be sort of the consensus of where council is going is perhaps show us or share with us some additional information, I could bring that back, so.
Here's, here's my concern is that's, and I'm not faulting you for this, but that's a bureaucratic response because then these things do get perpetuated, and a special assessment's for a special project. What I would do, and I would go ahead and make a motion, that we not renew the special assessment, that we direct staff to budget for this next year under the general fund for parking, and we also direct staff to work with the DDA and all downtown businesses to determine just what we're talking about, a process that can help cover this infrastructure. I don't want this tax to be a crutch that damages businesses. When it comes down to it, you know, we're all self-interested. We all have to pay for the parking lots, we all have to pay for the streets, and a tax is a tax. If there's a project that we get creative with and come up with and work with businesses that's a new partnership, I'm all in favor of that, and I would go out and champion that. But I think when we've had twenty-two years, this has gone on too long. We have businesses that are hurting now, that, you know, the theater made it clear how hard they're having a time, Horizon Books made it clear to me, Grants made it clear to me. I didn't get one out of all those twenty, probably more than twenty businesses, including talking to Barrett Cottner and Bishop, professional businesses, talking to retail, talking to Investment, Mitchell Investments. None of them felt like this wasn't anything but an extra burden, extra tax that made it harder to do business downtown. So my motion is that we not renew the special assessment, we direct staff to budget for two thousand, whatever, twenty-two, twenty-three, and to go ahead and start working with the DDA and the downtown businesses if we think that we could redo it as a special project, or simply do what we need to do because we're all paying it from taxes and we have to learn how to budget this into our general fund or street fund. So that would be my motion.
I'll second it.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers, Alabas?
Yes.
Angles?
No.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes.
I am going to make another motion that we table this until the next meeting. I would like to table this until the next time that we meet.
Councilmember Shippers, Alabas?
No.
Angles?
Yes.
King?
No.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes.
Okay, well, if we're not going to agree upon anything tonight, then no action's going to be taken?
Correct. I, I cannot legally take action tonight if council is tying. I'm going to put our city attorney, Laura Genovich, on the spot for a quick moment. In terms of process protocol, I don't believe there's anything legally that would prohibit the city from having this on another agenda, given the action that they have or have not taken this evening. Is that true?
That's correct. There was a motion to table to a specific date that did not pass, but there's nothing that would preclude this from being brought up again.
Okay, all right. So I appreciate the debate. It's good to hear. We'll continue it at another point in time.
Yep. I think the debate is really good.
I think the debate is really good, and I think that we need to have more of it.
Yeah, let me clarify because I can fully imagine myself supporting everything you just said next time. So I'm not closing myself off to anything. I just wanted another period of time before I...
Sure. And staff will work feverishly in the background and try to get some additional data to you guys.
And I'd also like to say, because I didn't say it earlier, that I really appreciate all of the efforts that you all went through in getting us to this point for this conversation. So very much appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, we have a communication this evening.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM on November 19, 2022 for the Toy Town Toy Trot 5K.
I would make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from 7:00 AM to 11:00 on November 19, 2022 for the Toy Town Toy Trot 5K.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers? Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. Appointment?
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Kevin Fent to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on October 17, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Kevin Fent to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on October 17, 2025.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. And I'd also like to say thank you to Kevin. He has been on the Planning Commission for 21 years, so a good faithful servant. And that takes us to the manager's report.
Thank you, mayor, and members of the city council. Couple of items on the manager's report this evening, at least with respect to the first two, they're sole-source vendor-type items, which is why you're going to see a request for waiver of bid. The first one is regarding hydraulic rescue tools that are used to help extricate people that unfortunately may find themselves in accident-type scenarios. It's the tools that our fire department uses. Apollo Fire Equipment's the only vendor that sells the Hearst Tools, which is the brand that we use within the lower peninsula, and it's our desire to continue to use that particular product. The request this evening would be to waive competitive bidding and award the purchase of Hearst E-Drolic Combination Tool to Apollo Fire Equipment of Romeo, Michigan, in the amount of $13,450. Funds are available in the fire department budget, which is in our general fund.
Would this be something like the Jaws of Life, Marcus?
Yes.
Like that? It is an actual, what we used to call the Jaws of Life?
Yeah, it's just another brand.
Okay, very good. I'd make a motion to waive competitive bidding regarding the purchase of our Hearst E-Drolic Combination Tool.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is with regard to, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to award the purchase of the Hearst E-Drolic Combination Tool to Apollo Fire Equipment of Romeo, Michigan, in the amount of $13,450.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Apologize. Eager Beaver here. So, okay. The next item is a request to utilize Spectrum Internet Services to connect to our new wellfield. As you can see in the communication, we did look at a couple of other options. Currently, utilizing Spectrum is the most cost-effective at this time. At some point in the future, we might look at putting fiber in ourselves to connect, but that would be at a rather significant cost. The recommendation this evening, therefore, is to waive competitive bidding and use Spectrum Enterprise as our connection company in the amount of $12,538.91. We do have funds available in our IT or our information technology fund accordingly.
This involves the installation of the cable, Marcus?
Yes.
The laying of it in-ground?
I'm assuming it's in-ground. Owen, do you know? Is it aerial or in-ground?
I don't know the specific answer to that question, but I would imagine that it's in-ground. It's at the apartment buildings there, and the actual cost, I don't think we put it in there, but it's just over $20,500, and charter covers eight.
Okay, thank you. I'd make a motion to waive competitive bidding regarding Internet Services at the new wellfield.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve Internet installation, I'm sorry, cost of $12,538 for Spectrum Enterprise.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Alabas? Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. I didn't know if Steve was stepping on your foot over there, Marcus.
No, no, no. I was thinking about jumping in, but I was waiting. Thank you. The last item is with regard to what we're calling the Chestnut Street Water Main Improvement Project. The city council may or may not recall, the high school is going through and redoing their Veterans Memorial Stadium. In fact, I don't know if they started today. I thought that they may have started breaking ground on that project yet today. There is an old water main located under the field that needs to be relocated, or should be relocated, I should say, as a part of this project. Because the last thing that anybody in our community wants to have happen is after the school system puts in a beautiful new field and track that, God forbid, the main should break and then results in having to have the demolition of a brand-new field or track occur. We have had a couple of meetings with the executive leadership of the school to talk about a potential cost-sharing agreement. Nothing has been officially worked out yet at this time, but we still need to move forward and get a contract awarded and get parts ordered in order to make this project happen anytime in the near future, or I should say, in the future. As soon as we are able to work out, hopefully, some form of a cost-sharing program, we'll obviously bring back that information as well. And the bids results are in your communication packet. Recommendation this evening is to go with the lowest bidder, CJ's Excavating. The total amount is $192,996.75. We are recommending a 5% contingency, and therefore, that is our recommendation this evening, which would be to award an agreement or contract of $202,646,059. Funds would come from the Water and Sewer Fund, and again, it's anticipated that we'll hopefully have some form of a cost-sharing agreement with...
It's anticipated. Have you had any discussion about what that looks like now?
Yes, we have had some discussion, but we have not heard back yet as to whether or not they'll agree. One way or another, it's our infrastructure, and we're going to need to relocate it. So hopefully, we'll be able to subsidize that.
Relocate it, meaning move it away from underneath the football field?
Abandon it as it is. It'll be filled with like a concrete-type substance and cut off from the rest of the system, which, as a result, will then close a loop. Water will still be flowing to our neighborhoods, water will still be flowing to the school, but until we then put in a new main, the system won't be looped in that location.
They started taking up the track today.
Okay. I've not been out of the building, so.
Yeah, I certainly support us doing this. Like you said, it's a mutual benefit to both of us. We're both public entities. So even if they, whatever type of agreement we work out, I still think this is what we're doing.
Yeah, we have no choice. I mean, we have to. I'd make a motion to award the Chestnut Street Water Main Improvement Project to CJ's Excavating Inc. for the bid amount of $192,996.75. And to approve a 5% contingency for city engineer-approved field changes in unit quantity or scope due to unknowns in underground municipal construction, bringing the total amount of the award to $202,646.59.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Moving along, mayor, members of the city council, under adoption of ordinances and resolutions, we have one item this evening, and that is a request to adopt a resolution approving the MDOT contract for reconstruction along West Division Street from Colfax Street to Linden Street, and a copy of the documentation is in your public packet accordingly.
This was the other half that we were waiting to do to get the funding for? Is that what this is?
Well, we did both halves of Chestnut. This is the first half of West Division that we broke apart to do the first half with grant funding.
Okay, same thing, different...
Yep, same thing, different, same thing as Chestnut, a little bit different order. And then, as in all the other projects that we do utilizing these funds, this is your last action related to this project. So the state handles all the bidding and the award. Basically, this agreement and the contract that's included in the packet commits us to the funding, and then they take it from there. And then we pay them for our portion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve MDOT Contract 22-5437 for reconstruction along West Division Street from Colfax Street to Linden Street.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, tonight in our packets, we do have last minutes to the Downtown Development Authority to just review at our leisure. And at this time, we'll open the floor for our final public comment. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and go to the order if anyone has anything.
I do have something this time. Last time, we met in closed session, and we were talking about, we received a confidential legal opinion about updating the marijuana ordinance. And I would make an informal request, or I can make a motion, that we have some type of a small public discussion on that at one of our meetings in the future. So I don't know if that's something we could do next time, or if I should make a motion that that be added to the next agenda, or...
You can just ask.
I think we can, each individual council member can ask for agenda items.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea. Get the public involved, let's hear what they say.
We can't do anything without having the public...
No, I just, we had our closed session, and I think there's actual discussion to be had. A short discussion at least.
We want the public to be a part of it. Sometimes they don't feel like they are. So let's get them in here. If you've got a problem with it, step up to the microphone. That's my go-to-the-order.
And I'll just...
Go ahead.
Yes to everything everyone is saying. And regarding that particular item, it's just not ready yet to come forward, only because we're still working on what potential amendments may look like and how to bring that back.
And that's why, I guess, I wanted to have a discussion before too much effort and energy was put into any certain course, I guess, was my point.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we do need to go into closed session tonight. So if someone would please make that motion to get us there.
I'd make a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss a written confidential legal opinion with the city attorney, invite Adam Ojebka, Director of Public Safety.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Engels?
Before I vote yes, I do think even with this one, it's important to clarify that we are discussing the matters of Anthony Wolfe's employment, and I'll vote yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Mayor Falcons?
Yes.
Open session?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Did I miss anything?
We're all set.